Are you feeling any better?
A little bit, better than I was still, brother.
You don't look, your eyes don't look like you feel a hundred percent.
Today was a busy day, that's how many hybrids we got flushed.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, uh, welcome to the July twenty twenty five, town council meeting. We will be ten minutes. All favor, aye, opposed, okay. Approval of regime special meeting for the park plan, um. You and I, Nikki, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the regime special meeting for the park plan. All favor, aye, opposed, okay. Chris, you're up.
So, uh, put updates on the retention base and overview, um. We could score multiple options for the community as a whole. And, uh, basically everything planned for I, for most part, they can talk into what's out. Alright, so we're evaluating the company up suite plant, which is downstream compared to upstream of the system here. But the other thing that we're looking at, uh, is on the ditch here, there's a side of property over here that potentially be added on, and is a three bottle exit upstream coming through the bound. And one of the, the biggest model that is the old inner urban bridge. Most of the bridges are forty-two to forty-nine feet, this one holds about thirty-one feet. So, I'm saying today, get measurements off of that to, uh, basically work off the old model, having to see what's, what's that impact that bridge is causing. So, that's more of our act, and then, um, obviously, if this does work, and you look at placing out the suit plant, this would be the combination of retiring the existing systems. So, it could be a good way to communicate and all that. Okay? Any questions on the bases? Uh, water meters. So, Jeff called me up, and we walked with, um, Midwest water meters. They actually pulled out the lids, went into the, the covers. Some of the covers are just sitting on the ground, they're going to settle, and took off the pictures. Matt was there with us, he seen identifying these issues, and some of the new couple of those that the restoration was doing was terrible. We documented that as well, and then went to some other level of the, had a board with this. I reached out to Rob on this as well, Rob was probably, says we want to try to get a part for it now, but we don't have time to get a picture. Everything's appropriate according to the long term. Uh, the water project, um, show a way to improve development. Here again, they're lacking staffing, and that, while they are telling us to see you, I'd like to give more. I, everyone's ready for this project throughout today, right? Um, the, um, park project. So, we did pass the, uh, I grew park plan, uh, I submitted to, uh, the DNR, and they get feedback on it. They, uh, had some issues with, we want further comments with, uh, what kind of work we're going to do and, um, great create. I brought the information to our Daniel Levy guy at Riga, hey, this is specific language, last thing we're going to do, and it's acting from there here. And everything's associated with the mediation, the removal of existence, or even going up the, uh, very creative, and developing the sideline. The beginning is a four to one. So, that's a metal, I finally got plan come back, it's back today, and so, and that link on the CD, and we're going to talk to them as well. So, it's, it's all I have.
For the month of June, I had twenty-four calls for service. Um, I also had eighteen traffic stops. Um, I had three contacts for different ordinance issues. Um, I also had a couple of arrests for what I had once. Um, the town is now paid for Caliber, which is a new gas system that we're going to. We have to all get trained on it, kind of at their mercy on when they get down here, put on that training. I've heard anything from August until closer to the end of the year now, so, I'm not sure on that yet. Um, the block cameras, uh, the state got a hold of me a week ago, said that they are within thirty days of the permits getting granted. So, after that happens, it should be, hopefully in a few weeks after that, that'll also try to get those cameras put up, and those will be operational. Uh, that's all that I got.
In the month of June, we had five fire calls, two of those were these like this, and there's a national. Initial information, fire ward's been made. And the entire work in place on track to do by.
Uh, we're talking pretty busy month, as Chris touched on, we did have our meters replaced a few weeks ago. About half the meter place in town had to be dug up because the ride groups were too small, going for larger riders to live on. Uh, the company that did that did not do a good job. Everybody's like, I dug it up, we drove around like that, and they're, they're pretty bad. The company is supposed to be back at the end of this month, it's all those, and we're gonna have to probably walk around and work with making sure they get right to the center. Uh, we are also in the middle of flushing our mains right now. The town roughly uses about forty thousand gallons of water per day. And in the last two weeks, we've been pumping about a hundred and twenty thousand gallons, because all trucks have to fill enough water to fuel. Things like that stirred our water up a little bit. So, uh, we got most of the hydrants flushed today, we will finish them up tomorrow, and hopefully, I'll clear the water up some time. Have a really hard go right now with all the water trucks. Remember, we usually put a run of all that, and keep up the happening. Well, this should be a problem, but I understand the, the lines haven't been flushed in several years. So, I think that's my big problem right now, the line hasn't been flushed, it's a high level, it's, it's supposed to be done at least once a year. After we've got our lines flushed, hopefully, it won't be a problem. Got a question, if we, you flush every yard here, or is this, there's someone with, maybe four flushes in every yard here?
I'm still wondering, who, who, the trucks, do they, I know we have them either on there now, but are they, there's new people I see that are full of their trucks, so do you know, with your account, and your billing information, correct, and everything?
Yeah, sometimes there's a line trucks, where you have to fill up.
And they're also working on the, is it the dairy farm?
Yeah.
They've been taking lots of loads out to the dairy farm also.
Yeah, right now, they're taking out twice as much water as the town uses on their vehicles, they've got a lot of water going on. Ready, the park?
Well, um.
Uh, we, uh, yeah. We, I, I don't really, anyone, right?
Well, so, after the last meeting, I, one person talking to Gary, he, he agreed that he would go on the board. I thought he talked to Nikki.
Oh, I didn't know that you were, but, but I'm not certain afterwards, anyway, so, I, that's, I mean, he's someone else that's been, being appointed before.
Gary.
Karen.
Okay. Um.
He's been really active with coming to the meetings, and he's very involved in that.
Um, so, when, when Dan was on, that was the four years, right? Um. So. Today, or we should wait for, for next month, uh, just to, yeah. We'll, we'll check with, to make sure there's nothing specific we need to do, and everything's okay, and we'll.
Yes.
I just had my personal study, because I needed to, to, to.
Yeah, so let's, let's just double check the board and make sure we're all, we're looking at our moves, too, as well.
I think the red, uh, I don't think there's, I think we just have to, um, um. Um.
But I'll listen to that as well.
And then, um, we had discussed and came about our last meeting about possibly adding another line to the budget for the park for the community, so, we're going to do some separate. Um, and more information for stuff, so, that's something we're going to have to discuss and put on for the next meeting. We're also, I, I'm just trying to find out what he wants, he had lots of fundraising ideas, most, or is it, I don't know if we, the old movie that we like to, in conjunction with the next, um, block party, we'll talk to Walt in that, as a fundraiser. We want to try and, it's up to topic, then we use in the park, and then maybe just going down with the, um. Getting a really nice, like, the community building, um, from the park, there'd be some expenses to get a screen and that type of thing. Like t-shirts and sweatshirts, and maybe putting shoes, just to help get the extra, and a community calendar, community cookbook. Um, I just, that with the library, about a fall event, introduction, what can I present with them, maybe some, so, and stuff like that, but. Nothing big, but just a hope is to generate money so that we can help, or if they picked off a bet and, uh, start. Thing is, we're trying to do low cost, the low cost, but I don't know if there's an amount that you could achieve one year, that we did have to kind of get started with, so that first, or like, just going.
So, oh, I've worked, well, we've had a work from the, uh, party, uh. So, I mean, we have money set aside for the park, and we, we, we did, we did, I said, we have a park board, but it's, I think we could.
Like I said, you know, we're just trying to figure out what we can do, and we don't have to.
They could auction off some of that Christmas stuff.
Yeah, when they, when you did the talk the last time, and I, and we, and we, it was all bad at that time, you can go there and check to the town at that time, and I was thinking, it was probably the one that, that, that. So, they should have that amount of money to apply, so the capital should go down, because at the time, we thought you guys were going for it, and park committee at that time, it wasn't that.
Well, we, yeah, we're, we're, we're fine, yeah, we, yeah, for, I was going to say, is that fair? And we, but what we're doing is part of my needs to say, so that we can get a national grant, so that's what we're working on as well, so there's some other things that we have to, to, to. We want to make sure we're doing our national grant, um, our one time on the team, we do, the.
So, if you want to give a family, like, uh, or, or, uh, money, would you like, uh, if there's things, certain things you need to get started, um, obviously, it's a little bit, sort of, for.
Okay, well, I, I, we'll, that's, we'll just get an idea, and we can, uh, hook the plan. And then, um, we're, we're going to first about, okay, you know, maybe a table, then add our four events, and then, um, I'm going to, we, we want to probably get your name. In two weeks, I guess, about being able to put up something up in public, at the back, and, um, such. And then, we were wondering, this window right here, if we could have it to put this park, have that, just kind of be a park window, to put, like, the ring, that have things for the community to see.
Okay, okay, well.
That's an issue, but, um. Oh, no, but when we were outside, we were like, oh, let's do like a perfect, you know, the, the, right there on the street, so, um, I think that's all that I have. But we'll, we'll, um, what we think, comes what is what we need to get started, or some of those, that, if I raise a hand, so.
I think we're thinking, we have vendors, and we can start our talk, and it's, I don't even think you, for a small house, you don't need to improve them.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll get with her then, thank you.
Um, I was trying, so, I was, I'm not going to, uh.
But so, and, so this is like, any of these events, we can, any of these stuff, things we can do for, they can do the top of them, yeah, then with the block party, yeah.
The only thing we're going to need to do is through the, um, resolution to promote the streets, and what time we want to do it, uh, if you want to.
Well, none of the stuff, none of the stuff would be involved in the, in the streets, discussed.
I don't know what a chalk wall is.
Well, we're just gonna have, um, decorate people and families decorate sections of sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll take pictures, and then at the event, we'll buy tickets to vote, uh, for that thing.
Okay, that's cool, I had no idea, never, that's, that's cool, I don't care what that, okay, I guess, so.
Well, they talked, they, the last August, they didn't get an event, but they did. I didn't figure it'd be a couple, but I wanted to say that.
Don't want to do any damage, anything, and then, uh, break the law. Uh, Pam has my, we only, only see the one right here. Yeah, she'll have to look it up, we see the one here, but, um, she'll, yeah. Okay, um.
Documentation was submitted to, I am submitting an amount of fifteen thousand five hundred seventy-four for reimbursement of jobs, wages for April and June. And I did receive a, a report from the Alliance that Jeff was doing good on his classes, and he received a ninety percent final grade for his first semester, so. All bankrupts are balanced from evidence, so, we received winning money, it's mostly from Fountain View, an amount of three thousand one fifty-seven eighty-four in June. And our prospectors are, and we have, we can't do anything. We received one hundred one thousand one thirty-six sixty-one from the auditor for our fall tax payment. A payment was repelled from that to pay for our audit, state board accounts, in an amount of twenty-one thousand four sixty-three thirty-six. And that was only half of our payment, so the other half will come out of our December, um, fall taxes. I do have a budget meeting with the LGA, put the, the LGA app on July twenty, July, July twenty-nine. At one fifteen, it should last about forty-five minutes, between twenty-one hundred seventy. If they need a council, would like to sit down on the call, we love to be on that, I'll, I'll, I'll do the first one tomorrow, our budget, we'll tell them, help with the numbers, so we're all going to sit down on that. All required documentation has been submitted to state board accounts for our six-month follow-up to the audit. And mainly, possibly written on the should be received, like, uh, two weeks, and I think it's, uh, a little bit, uh, thousand, something, you need to have some of that.
Okay, what was the date and time again, over?
Date is, uh, July twenty-ninth at one fifteen, and it lasts about thirty-five minutes. It's a twenty-one hundred seventy, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
And we want to set up another, uh, four years of, 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 of.
And how much, uh, much, uh, to do, which, how much should we, uh, do for the time?
Okay, uh, so today is the fourteen, um, or the next week sometime, um. That is, uh, one thirty, right, on the third, or fourth.
Um, go for triple, or fifty-seven thousand, three thirty-one, twenty-three.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the bills for approval, fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. All favor, aye, opposed?
And we have several adjustments. Account two-two-three-nine-zero-zero-zero is incorrectly estimated, here to a third, excuse me, I have, um, that, that, it would be seventy-four-seven.
All favor, aye, opposed?
Account two-three-one-five-zero-zero-zero, zero, is a, we could definitely credit up one fifty-eight thirty-four.
All favor, aye, opposed?
Um, account one-zero-four-seven-zero-zero-one is a credit for full bill, one hundred and two dollars and sixteen cents. Account two-three-zero-one-zero-zero-one, okay, in a full bill credit, one fifty-four dollars and three cents. A full bill credit for account one-one-one-two-zero-zero-one, in a sixty-five ninety-four.
All favor, aye, opposed?
And we have one, we're, we're, because it's in the, I, I'm, I'm, I'm.
It's, uh, account, one, uh, account, two-two-five-seven-zero-zero-one, uh, if you're not here, that's, you know, credit, that's, it's the same thing. Quite a week, from that, mostly, uh, credit, that account, two-two-five-seven-zero-zero-one, for four ninety-nine dollars and nine cents.
Ninety-five or seventy-five?
One said ninety-five, nine.
How's that?
All favor, aye, opposed? And Theresa, don't let me forget to get out of here, I had a leak, that, 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 probably, uh. Just remember that, we were talking about. Online?
No, that was Lynn's.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was Lynn's. No, I, I also just had a leak, leak for about three or four days, or, probably, yeah, yeah. Uh, two months later, um. Okay, uh, no old business, uh, new business, uh, we have the approval of the salary ordinance, number seven, twenty twenty-five. Okay, uh, so, would Jeff, um, every so often, even though his salary is set by us, the state mandates, he gets like that, forty-four cent raise, that part of this whole, uh. Um, ownership, so this is, uh, and, this is part of that, sort of, asking, uh, a menu ordinance, number seven, twenty twenty-five. And ordinance, maybe, uh, establish a twenty-five salary, for these forty, for the hour value. All favor, aye, opposed? Uh, it's only twice. Well, let's do it, say, uh, suspend the rules. Okay, uh, all favor, aye, opposed? All favor, aye, opposed? Make a motion to suspend the rules. All favor, aye, yes. Alright, um. If you're saying, outside companies, having any catalog, that's what we already wrote up. No, I haven't talked about any of that, but, um, so, we had Summers in town about a month ago, that was putting in a new sewer line here on Branson Street. Uh, they could not find our main sewer line, so they ended up tapping into our storm drain line, and left it that way for over a week. Uh, I had to call them several times, I kept getting run around, before they come back out, and actually, they get backed up, and locate the sewer line. They took up to it, and right now, we don't have anything in our ordinance that charges them, like a deposit, where if they would do that, and leave, not come back, and then we would have to fix it. Uh, they don't have to get any type of permit or anything, so. I was gonna have you guys consider making outside companies pay some kind of deposit, or get some kind of permit to be able to do that. Because if Summers would've came back, we would've had to repair it ourselves, and it would've been thousands of dollars to do, so, it was, um.
Is it this Jordan, that's on Jordan, probably has to call up.
Yeah, Jordan would probably have to call that, but. Uh, that's.
You could send them an email, maybe, and then we'll, have them, they're done, for their, their.
Yep, you have an example from another town or something that, that you could use, or? I don't, but that's.
Well, you might call them, they have Congress or something, and maybe.
I know Mary had one, because Summers was talking about how Mary charged us, like, forty-five hundred dollars for the capilline, so, maybe, uh, maybe reach out to Mary, and arrest the Alliance, if they know someone who had something like that, if it wasn't. Yeah, that was, uh, I couldn't believe that they did that, yes. Okay. Um. Jeff, on the, uh, one inch line, um, being reduced out of the five eights, where it's, it's just the, the line was the one inch, for some reason, I don't know, I'm not sure why, um, but reducing it out to five eights in the meters. So, right now, it's a one inch line going into their house, um, and the only way that we can put a five eights meter in there, is we'd have to buy the hardware that reduces it from one inch to five eights. Uh, and we can do that, but since their house is set up for one inch, and that's what's in there now, I didn't know if you wanted that to be on the town, or the home order.
The problem, Laura, is they, they have one that's, that they're doing far, far, far.
Well, um. You could, you could build that place, you could, um, I don't think why it was done that way. You have any idea? Um, yeah, the only way we can put a five eights in there is if we buy the hardware to reduce it, what's that called? I would have to get a quote, and he'd get here, and tell me to buy, probably, a couple hundred dollars, that would make. Yeah, I mean, I, I think we should do it, um, you know. I don't know why this was ever allowed, or I guess was ever done, again, with. I always, is Elton had, uh, cattle.
I always, is Elton had, uh, cattle, was back at one time.
Like, did it well?
Four, I can't remember.
Long before it was.
We never put her in ninety-six.
Yeah, so, um.
Well, what's the difference for the one-inch, two-inch?
Well, since it's all, it's all gonna be on bill, the bill's done, right?
Why?
Well, I mean, you have to talk with Pam, of course.
I, I never used.
Yeah, you have to talk with Pam, unfortunately.
Because the ordinance says you have to bill it.
Yeah.
For the one-inch, she'll be considerably higher than what you're paying for five-eights.
So.
This can't be granted, actually, too.
Well, I know, but it was, yeah, we've been.
It's been, it's been known since I've ever lived here.
I never did, I, so, yeah, so, uh, every, every resident in town is, is, is a five-eighth, so.
To be honest, like, most of the service line are three-quarter, the old ones, most of the other are, are in solid one-inch. It's, cause of cost difference, it's insignificant, for the plastic, but with that, you have to reduce it down either three-quarter or the one-inch, and it's kind of eight.
Yep. We're gonna do that, huh?
Well, so I could use my water, or?
Um, it's gonna be, as much as everyone else in town has. Be on the five-eights, uh, meter.
On average, pressure, I don't know, about fifty, fifty, I don't know. Five-eighths, huh? That's on the five-eights, yeah, not very.
Okay, um. Fire riders, it's something to do. Uh, I know this was, you call in, or someone called in. Then, or whatever. Well, I think they definitely ought to be, if it's, uh, able to be working, it's a benefit for them.
So, I was under the impression that anything past that new six inch here that we just put in, they're responsible for now, so, I was gonna tell them that they need to maintain the fire riders that they wanna have in there.
Yeah, I can, that's, and it is their responsibility, as far as even the, uh, every old contractor, it's their responsibility, um, and that's why we kept them all, no evidence if you want to do that, yeah, uh, so. It is their responsibility to do it, but, um, I think it'd be a benefit for anyone that works out there, uh, working fire riders, but it's not, and the town's not gonna, it's totally possible. Yeah, we didn't have, uh, we didn't have that in the, in the contract this time, but we saw the master, you know, this time, opposed to the, so. Um, and you can just do it so that you can charge for it, so, uh, I wouldn't say there'd be an additional, uh, cost to the town, for an additional bill. Um, before I know this, probably that's, it's kind of, for the residents to have working fire riders, they're probably, it's only, you know, for them, but.
Just one more, you gotta say, now, there's a matter, if you're going to, you know, if you decide to do open up to the fire hydrants, and another fire department, you go up there and use the fire hydrant, and you pull eight thousand gallons of water out of that pipe, and you make charge, then, maybe a thousand gallons, you know, to do it.
All the, they would last a meter, so.
So, John, what's the difference of having a one-eighth, when everything is just done by volume?
Um, I mean, I'm not, I guess I'm not gonna sit here and say, I'm the expert, and, and have all the knowledge, of, every resident in town has a five-eighth meter. Every residential resident has a five-eighth meter, so.
Okay, but, but still, we're, we're, we get two thousand gallons, for a base foot. What's it matter whether it goes through a one-eighth meter? Or?
It's, it's the bill, and, 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 especially on it. If it, if it's goes through a one-inch meter, your bill's gonna be substantially higher, that's where our ordinance is.
Seems ridiculous, but you're still going by the volume of water, too.
Tell me that's where our, but I probably feel. Uh.
Well, I think it's kind of, it's, I think.
Yeah, I'll go up there and park vehicles on both sides, and then see how much room we have left for cars to get through. I do it by the day, it looks pretty tight, just parking straight along the side of the road, so, I think have them parked diagonal, there may not be enough room to get car through there, once you get car in a place.
Then we put some diagonal spots there, I don't, I don't know either, it'd be, but how many additional parking slots is that gonna create?
My suggestion, my suggestion would be to put the handicap spots back there, along the side of the road, and then anybody that's not handicapped, to park down on Kendall Street.
But even if it makes Kendall Street high, you may get people both side of the, people are parked on, so the line area, it's, it's. Let's just measure it, because I think, I'd be like, well, the three cars.
Do you wanna do Alex under new business, or wait until the very end?
I'm just wanting to do that.
Perfect.
Okay, uh, Terrence home?
Yeah.
Yes.
What do you mean?
For?
He agreed with the leader, like, he, or my husband, that got charged for it, and he never paid for the vendor, but he's had this.
Yeah, so, uh, before the case was dismissed, um, I spoke with the prosecutor on that, he asked the town whether they got paid, uh, the money that was due, or owed, um, that, that was, uh, paid. And, um, he asked, would that any, any, you know, how the case was handled, was disposed of, although it didn't, um, he decreed, he just decided to dismiss it, um, but as far as any refund, it's not gonna be a refund, um.
But I paid for, it says right here, what I paid for, and it was proven not to be guilty on it.
No, he wasn't proven not to be guilty, the case was dismissed after he agreed to pay it.
I paid it.
Oh, somebody paid it.
He did not.
It doesn't, it really doesn't matter, thus, we paid it, it was paid, and that was why the case was dismissed, uh, it was only dismissed because of that.
He's lived here for nineteen years, and this has never happened.
Okay, um.
I have receipts showing that, uh, how many pipes that you had to pay for, because. The damage was caused from the pipes bursting. Says that gallon of water was used an hour, for how many days? Does a one person use a gallon of water in their house for hours or days on end?
I'm not familiar with exactly what all the hours.
Did you use, it said three days, where you had a leak for three days, would you use a gallon of water for three days?
I have no idea, we can't, we can't figure it out.
Did you, you had a leak, is what I'm asking you, so your leak is gonna show that you used a gallon of water an hour for three days, right?
I'm not sure what you're asking, or what you're getting at, but the bottom line is, um.
My husband was found not guilty, but.
He wasn't not guilty.
How, did, how, how else would it show?
Okay, well.
How else would the record show, is what I'm asking you.
It says case was dismissed.
Because he was found not guilty.
No, it wasn't, but.
Then how else does a record show that someone's found not guilty?
This answer's gonna.
How else does a record show in court that someone's not found guilty? Literally, I'm asking you, how does a record show on a court record that someone is not found guilty?
If there is a trial, and it's not guilty.
The prosecutor wasn't going to take it to trial, because he said that their peers would not find him guilty. I have all of the information here that I showed the prosecutor, if you'd like to look at it.
I, I know all about it.
No, you don't, you haven't looked at this, I asked you to call me specifically, but you never return my calls.
I did not get a notice, you asked me to call you, um, so.
Well, I'm trying to talk to you right now, and you're just trying to dismiss me.
I'm telling you, this issue has been addressed.
No, it hasn't.
There's not gonna be a refund.
Why?
I just told you, there's not gonna be a refund.
You're gonna get your money back for your leak, though.
Hey. Alright, next, Alex.
Hi there, Alex Youngner, uh, Community Foundation of Wabash County, and Melissa Ford from our team, uh, the director of development, joined tonight. This is a follow-up, uh, to a park committee meeting, uh, a couple months ago, maybe two park committee meetings ago, uh, as you all know, and we talked a little bit about the park, it's one of two projects in La Fountain that was included. As a part of the stellar pathways designation for Wabash County, um, one of those projects is the stormwater project, that, uh, Commonwealth's working on with, with you all, uh, that's from. A totally separate bucket of funding underneath the stellar umbrella, uh, that doesn't require a match necessarily, uh, in terms of percentages, um, whereas the park project is through the DNR bucket of funding under the stellar designation. That does require a fifty-fifty match, that Ford was talking about, uh, is the park committee's planning both on what's gonna be included in the first phase of the park, uh, to help set kind of a fundraising goal, they're also looking at how the town's gonna come up with the other fifty percent that's required as a part of that. Um, and so in that conversation, with the community foundation, I'll let Melissa speak a little bit to the mechanics, uh, but with other communities and local units of government for projects, uh, of all kinds, but definitely with parks, the park up in Rowan being the example of that. Uh, we have what's called non-permanent funds at the community foundation, so that donors who wanna make a contribution to La Fountain Park, uh, if you all agree to establish the non-permanent fund, could do that directly to the community foundation. And we would handle all of the administration of that, and maybe that's a good transition point to Melissa, just about what that process looks like, and then what would be needed from the town, uh, in terms of set up that non-permanent fund with the community foundation.
So, Bob, there's something at Rowan, it came to me a couple years ago, so they created the Rowan Park Fund, um, they've been helping money to flow through the town, um, they want the fund to scale, and have it carry the faculty. So, he set up a fund, basically, you can call it whatever you want, and there's a purpose in it, the purpose to use, just to just put the town in the park. And, and then in the agreement, there's, um, a slot for a cluster distribution, and that's where you decide who is authorized to cut funds from public fund. And, and what we do typically is we just pay, so for instance, if there's a construction obstacle, you can pay the vendor directly, so, you just like, hey, we have this bill for the park. You need to submit it on, we'll pay on, come on, that's there, so you can do it. Um, one of the benefits of it, we, 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 is we help promote the project, we put it on a newsletter, we put it on a Facebook, it's like, it's like, um, there's QR codes that direct to, like, the owner, community member to the park. They, they can, they can, she got the funding, and help each other, and, um.
Is there a fee for dating?
There is a fee, um, you need to, if you present a mentor, um, um, with the stuff that we get, it's not a manual, it's just.
One time at the time of a gift that would come into the fund, if Lori, you scan QR codes to donate, as soon as that gift comes, it's one. It's in the package.
So, that's every?
Yep.
So, every time there's a gift, it's the two percent, okay?
Correct, yep.
What type of reports do you, you strip to the town, and to satisfy, so they work?
And that would not be, it would not be an asset of the town, it would be, it was, it was an asset of the community foundation, but donations made, but the purpose is written in a way that can only be spent at the sign-off of whoever you designate, right?
So, are those expenses shown as expenses from the town?
No.
If you pay a vendor, it's not shown as an expense, how that part comes from the town?
Nope, it would not be out of your pocket, no, and both to satisfy the match requirement of the DNR, they're gonna say, at the time of that application, they're gonna say, what's the proof that you have your match in hand? You would be able at that point to show the fund statement at any point, that we can hold from the money that's in the community foundation's fund, in addition to whatever, if you did have park item, line items here, like you do, right? You would be able to show both of those, if the match requirement satisfied, the fifty percent match that you know would require.
So, your fund hundred takes the expense and the income out of the town fund, I mean, if they never hit the town.
Never touch your books.
And stay where the cost goes, goes not, look upon that as expenses for the month.
No, there would be, when you work with the donor, the donor would cut that check directly to the, the La Fountain Park Fund, or whatever you decided to tie to the fund, uh, and, exactly right, we would. After we got that invoice from, you would hold the contract still, with whatever vendors were working out there on your property, right, but you would basically initial, the two people would initial the invoice, and say, this is good for payment, since thus, it would be paid directly to that vendor out of the fund, if not.
And then the reason, as some from time, do you do some type of report as to what has been, and what is coming?
All the time, yep, um, anyone who has on the fence, you have, uh, call the portal, you just log in, and you can see donations that they're coming, and you can say.
Um, just to clarify, this was the only way we could take donations by credit card and to be tax deductible, correct? I know for credit card.
I don't know about your processes at the town, right, but in terms of.
Just curious, okay.
That's, that, yeah, for that. We can take donations online via credit card, um, or a check, or, or cash, right, and if we don't like, but we've been handed an envelope full of cash that's supported on, from, that sounded like it was an envelope full of cash. A, a group of young people raised money for a community project, and that was able to go into the.
And you provide the tax document, then?
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt.
Okay.
So, if you're lucky, I'm going to try to, to draw the funds, is to pay them for expenses for the park upgrades?
Uh, for park upgrades, or in the, it's the Rowan Park, they have different fundraisers, no different than you were talking about, Wendy, and we can also use, so long as it's charitable, right, any grant that would have to be made, would have to be charitable. Um, but if it was for a fundraiser to continue raising money to support the park, that's something we've done before, uh, is what, if that money could.
Like, if you use, like, uh, events or something that we're having, you could use that send QR codes, and those money to just take.
Exactly, yeah.
So, if we wanted to do, like, the smoking for a college event, it's not like, hey, would you guys organize a thing?
It's funny, outside of, you mean, if it wasn't to raise money for the park? Or you're saying to raise money for the park?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, could we organize the event? Oh, no, we, we, our team wouldn't, we're happy to help answer the questions at, at any point.
Smoking for a town, that's something all that, you knew you were gonna do.
Yeah, to receive all those donations that, that would be used as, we're happy to help plan with the park committee, if we can, help with the, the plan of fundraising. I thought you meant for other things, sorry. Tonight, you know, I mean, Tracy just made the comment of, do we have to wait till the next town board meeting, what does that look like? We have kind of a draft template fund agreement, since all of our fund agreements come for key foundations everywhere, and ours are very, very similar, and then we just change the customizable pieces of them, um, tonight, and lots of, correct, from, um. But the only thing that, if you wanted to move to where we could establish the fund and collect, start to begin collecting money, uh, that fund agreement's, you're gonna want Jordan to look at, I'm imagining, between the town. But the only thing that we would need in order to set it up from our side would be, uh.
Approval?
Who has approval, right, so if it requires Pam and a town board member, the town board president could sign off, and who can draw the funds, um, and then, right, to, to establish it.
Yeah, just the, if you're wanting to establish it.
Yeah, if you want to establish it with the community foundation, just a motion that says, yep, we want to establish it, and the, so, people that can request expenditures are the clerk treasurer and a member of the town board. So, whoever you'd say, well, finalize the written agreement with Jordan and all those things, um.
Is our next town before the block party?
Yeah, no, eleventh, yeah, ninth, eleventh, yeah.
Um, so it would be nice to have that in place, uh, beforehand, uh, but we would definitely have to have Jordan look at it, um, so it may be something where, if you could email that to Jordan. And, uh, send us a copy also, if you don't mind, if we have to get it ready, and then, um, once Jordan's okay with that, we could probably have a, a short special meeting just to approve that. And then, uh, have it be available for the block party, because I think, we'd miss, we'd miss out on opportunity to keep, and have it.
I think you have to be able to be able to say about talking, but, you know, is, if you, because if not, you're not, you, you can't say.
The other thing, too, John. The other thing too, John, is that you can do if you you all wanted, was to approve it pending Jordan's approval, right? Approve set establishing the fund with whoever you want from it, sending Jordan's approval, because it also requires our board's approval. Which we'll get, not not to begin to take donations to, but to secure with the agreement itself, and our board meets August sixth. So it will be approved at the August the sixth board meeting perhaps.
We'll have to be a contract inside, I think, right? Um. Let's do the, let's get to Jordan, and then if we can get us something.
What I would do generally have, have to advertise like twenty four.
For the same day as our budget. Well, he's gone and then back and then gone again, so, um, we can check and see. He should be available by email, uh, so he wouldn't even need to be here for a meeting, as long as he could look it over.
Through the town, yeah.
Through it, and then, um, he's available by email. So, uh, as long as we can email to him, it is approval, and then maybe we can just do it on the twenty fourth, have a, advertise a short special meeting for that. As well as the, the party that we have.
For the draft agreement ahead of that meeting, who would you like to be included on the approval, to approve money that would come out of that?
Uh, we'll definitely pay him, and probably one of us, um. Uh, we can just put, um, I would say just the clerk treasurer and one board member. Would make the same board number, I think, just one board.
We'll get that, put in that draft.
It should be two, probably should be two then. Uh, well, Nikki, she's right around the corner, I'll I'll day, so. We have to.
That was probably interesting, Eric, you have the clerk treasurer and councilor, or?
Um, there's a town president and clerk treasurer.
He's the one that lives around the corner, that was the guy, or president there, and is retired, so that's why they took him down.
When you transition in that, right?
Yeah.
You just want to keep that somewhere, and then you know.
Yeah.
And the other thing that you still have approval, by the council, that's what we need from. And then we also have someone passes away, and they're in front for the bar, if you go over to us.
So then just, so then, I mean, if we have any cash collections, we just return those into the pan, we just put into our local fund, those are sometimes.
Come here, the only thing about the cash, though, is we cannot issue any large donation, somebody that would expect a tax fee to to suit that.
I'm just, I'm just saying, like, for the thing, if people put a box or five, and we request that, then I just need to write. But if I convert it and just like, write your check, then it would go on the meat, so I just need to bring you this, I'm not sure I. You could also.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just if, yes, it's just if a donor, if there's a donor who says, hey, everyone has a C C, and they have cash. That's fine, but then you just need, you need to have a name, address. And that might be something, once we get all approved, you can give me that information, I'm gonna do a form, and I'll be get that with it.
I hate it. Sorta glad.
If they wanna leave by Friday, by Friday, they can come straight to the website, and we. We'll get that draft over to Jordan, you guys.
Thank you, talk to you later. Thank you. You too.
And I apologize, I didn't get in on that calendar for me. Uh, so August night, we have a walk party, as you walk out, and then here and do us, uh, shoot paper. Uh, could we please ask the town, uh, we can have the road log from this section onward, I think three o'clock this time.
Three to, uh, eight, so nine, make sure you mind the box. But, um. Yeah, people are repulsing, um. Uh, so I make a motion to approve, uh, Fort Smith Street, uh. Ransom from this alley, this is a post office in the other building, down to the alley, that's a lot of room in the building.
Why did I never get this?
So then, uh, Wabash, that's Wabash, that's there, right, Wabash, New Campbell.
I wanna call it.
Uh, from three, um, three to nine.
Oh, no, that's not.
Yeah, I'll just bring that up. Um, I I can say in the past, when, uh, if our department has, um, the holiday party, we have been asked for, and we can be forty thousand.
Brought up before, before I started doing it the last few years, so we'll probably do it, um.
You wanna play?
Okay, so then it's, uh. Ransom.
Western. Every time, it's like, we have this conference.
All right, so I make a motion on October thirty first, um.
Five to eight.
Where are you greeting?
Five, five to eight.
We want to be five to nine.
Yeah.
Uh, on October thirty first. Wabash, um, at Branson and Kendall. I'll figure it out.
Another time that they go there and that's basically it for the town. I went to the library on Saturday, twenty, on Saturday, we're like, that's pretty close. From, um, say, two o'clock to two right. The other thing, and say, the other one is they, for the wider, from here, it's, um, it's Kendall to the alley.
That's another big hole in the ninth or street, this passing down on. I bet you love it. It would meet somebody that, it almost somebody that. You're gonna get it hit, or you're gonna go over and.
I'll play with that as well.
I bet, I bet.
Uh, Jeff also, um, one out there, um, in the, for the, um, um. Getting, uh, football ball there, uh, um, they're in the same.
Local packing, yeah. It was never really done right, first time I came out, I mean, so it's just, put it on top of the gravel, it's never been seen. All right, anybody else?